December 15, 2020, regular school board meeting of ISD 63 Roseville area schools. Todd, could you please take the roll call?
Certainly. Clerk Anderson is here. Chair Bogeszewski.
Here.
Treasurer Goggins.
Here.
Director Johnson. Director Chu.
Yeah.
And Director Shaw.
Here.
Great.
Thank you, Todd. Aldo, do we have any agenda adjustments tonight?
Yes, I do have one, and that's a recommendation for a closed session before adjournment of tonight's school board meeting. And the closed session is related to possible litigation on an employee matter.
Thank you, sir. So we will move to do that after your report today, after item, Agenda Item 9, I believe, is when that would be appropriate. Let me re-show myself. Sorry about that. I didn't realize I was still linked out. Do we need to move and vote on agenda adjustment, or we just do that? I don't recall.
Michelle, do you have guidance on that?
Why don't we go ahead and move and vote, just to be safe?
Sure. Could someone move that we adjust the agenda as per Dr. Sacoli's recommendation, please?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none. Todd, can you take the vote for us?
Clerk Anderson votes aye. Chair Bogeszewski.
Aye.
Treasurer Goggins.
Aye.
Director Johnson.
Aye.
Director Shaw.
Aye.
And Director Chu.
Aye.
Thank you. That passes. We will do that. With that, we move into announcements and comments. Any general announcements or comments tonight from anyone? And we also have one announcement that is an award presentation as per the agenda. And what I'd like to do is introduce a couple of folks. I'd like to introduce Kirk Schneiderwind, who is the Executive Director of the Minnesota School Board Association. And I think Deb Pauly is deb on also with, also with MSBA. She's the president. And then I think Greg Abbott, their Director of Communications, is listening in. But I think Kirk and/or Deb will be, will be doing the main communicating with us this evening. For those who may be watching at home, Minnesota School Board Association is an association that represents all of the school boards throughout the state of Minnesota. They're a resource and a help to us, both in terms of technical issues, advisements on things, annual legislative prioritization, things like that. It's an organization that we rely on heavily. And really, all the members are all the school board members across the entire state of Minnesota. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kirk and let you say what you had to come tell us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and welcome, Roseville School Board, Roseville area school board members and the audience tonight. And it's a pleasure to be here tonight, and I have Deb Pauly, the MSBA Board President, with me. I will kick it off and just let you know that I am the Executive Director, and I'm proud to say that we do represent all of our public school districts in the state. And I appreciate your kind words, Mr. Chair, about the value and work that we provide for all of our school boards. But I'm here tonight to proudly announce that Emmett 2021 Rising Star Award is winner is a member of the Roseville School Board member. And that individual is Curtis Johnson, who is, will be given that award. So if you want to pause for Curtis, congratulations, Curtis.
Let me, in case you can see it, here's the actual award. It's a beautiful glass or lucite star, and it says on it, 2021 MSBA Rising Star, Curtis Johnson, Roseville area. And Curtis, this will be here at district headquarters for you whenever you get a chance to stop by and actually pick it up. Kirk, sorry to interrupt you.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to tell you a little bit of background on this. This was a brainchild of the entire MSBA staff to work, to work to meet the members' needs in a way that our staff could create a recognition that blended the passion and energy of our late Deputy Director Tiffany Rodding with one of our first-term school board members. As part of the broader discussion, staff observed that the tenure of our school board members was getting shorter. We have fewer board members staying on the board longer. We had met many new first-term board members who were making an impact early. And as we networked across the conference, we heard stories of these board members. We wanted some way to recognize them and their drive, energy, and passion, qualities that were witnessed every day with our Executive Director Tiffany Rodding. That's where the idea of the Rising Star Award came from. From what I've read about Kurt, she would be proud and pleased to see him win this honor. President Pauly?
Hello. I am Deb Pauly, the MSBA President and Board Member from the Jordan Public Schools. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Superintendent Sacola, and to the Roseville Board for welcoming us tonight as MSBA representatives. This is a great honor for us. This is a phenomenal award. And so Curtis, it is a great honor for us to present this to you. The Rising Star Award goes to a board member in their first elected term who has demonstrated a drive to better themselves, their school, their school board, and to improve opportunities for their students. It is someone who has led with passion, energy, and someone who gets results. That same spark that Tiffany had with the MSBA staff and with our membership. Let me read some comments from our award-winning nomination. Quote, "Curtis has been tireless in his involvement in and presence at countless district, school, and community events, meetings, and forums. Frankly, one might wonder if somehow he hasn't found a way to clone himself so that he can be engaged on so many fronts." Another person wrote, "Last January was especially challenging for my family as my kids were inundated with logos and references to football teams using Native American imagery as mascots. Curtis not only listened to what I had to say, but took meaningful action. There is a new policy now in place, and families like mine no longer have to worry about our children being exposed to those images while in school. I am proud, Curtis, to help present MSBA's Rising Star Award to you this evening, to Curtis Johnson from the Roseville area school district. Congratulations, Curtis. Much deserved award."
Thank you. Thank you. I, I'm nearly speechless. Okay. But I work with so many talented people and, you know, I'm, I love Roseville area schools and...
Yay!
I love Roseville area schools, and that was my kid. And happy to always do, you know, what I can. And, I mean, I don't think of myself any different than, I, every member of our board puts so much time and effort into what, you know, what we do. It's just really important. I, thank you all.
Thank you, Curtis. Thank you. Well, thanks, Kirk and Deb and Greg. We really appreciate your ability to take the time tonight to do this live with Curtis present. Curtis, like I said, the award will be here in the district for you at Michelle's desk for you to pick up whenever you want to. I don't know, any, any fellow board members want to kind of add on a little bit to anything we've heard tonight? Kitty, you look like you're reaching for your unmute button.
I was just going to say, it's, it's been a real pleasure to serve with Curtis, and it was a lot of fun to try to pull together the nomination because so many people wanted to contribute because they just had such a fantastic experience with the service that you've provided to our school district and broader than our school district, to the state in a variety of different areas. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Kitty.
Well, thanks, everybody, for that, Kirk and Deb and Greg. I guess have a great evening and appreciate your, your coming on with us tonight.
Thanks for joining us. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you so much for having us tonight. It was a great honor. And again, congratulations, Curtis, and have a great board, board meeting tonight, everyone, and have a wonderful holiday season.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You too.
Thank you so much.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Well, that will move ahead to community input. There's no one here at the district. Did we receive any emails prior to tonight for community input? Anyone?
I'm not aware of any.
Nope. Great. We'll move on. Entertain a notion, a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
And I'll second.
Thank you, Rose. And then Todd seconded. All in favor, or Todd, please take the roll.
Clerk Anderson votes aye. Chair Bogeszewski.
Aye.
Treasurer Goggins.
Aye.
Director Chu.
Aye.
Director Johnson.
Aye.
And Director Shaw.
Aye.
Thank you. That passes. We did have some retirements. Clerk Anderson, could you please walk us through those?
Certainly. I would like to move with sincere appreciation of the following retirements. Kathleen Tybor, Roseville area high school science teacher. Ms. Tybor has worked for the district for the past 22 years. We also have Donna Anderson, who's been a member of the clerical staff here at the District Center. Ms. Anderson has worked for the district for 25 years. And we'd like to thank Luanne Carlos, Parkview Center School paraprofessional. She has worked for the district for 12 years. We really thank their, their service and their dedication to our school district, and they move their retirements.
Second.
Thank you. Todd?
Clerk Anderson will vote aye. Chair Bogeszewski.
Aye.
Treasurer Goggins.
Aye.
Director Chu.
Aye.
Director Shaw.
Aye.
And Director Johnson.
Aye.
Thank you. And as Todd said, we sincerely appreciate the, the years of dedication and service that these folks have given to our kids and, and our families. Thank you. We also did some gifts. Curtis, would you be able to share the gifts tonight that we've received?
I'm trying to pull those up right now, actually.
Okay, sorry. Sorry, I kind of sprung that on you.
Yes. Okay. Maybe someone else could do it. I'm having teeth trouble.
Kitty?
I've got in front of me, if you'd like.
Great, go ahead. Thank you. Sorry, Curtis, I sent you a chat, but I didn't get your response. I should not have. I apologize. My phone.
I'm seeing it now. I'm like, oh!
Central Park Elementary School received from Sue and Joe Wozniak, school supplies and children books, books for the Panther Reads program. Roseville area high school received from Bruce and Julianne Seibert, funds for Abbott. High school also received an Amos, a trombone for the music department. Roseville area middle school received from John and Amy Elholm, funds for the music department. And Roseville area schools generally received from Roberta Williams, funds for Meals on Wheels. Thank you for our generous community, as always. We're very fortunate.
Thank you, Kitty. And yep, I think we all, we all agree with that sentiment, sentiment. Not a meeting goes by that we don't have multiple individuals or organizations giving something to our schools. So thank you very much. With that, we will move into reports and non-action items. And first up, Dr. Sacoli, it looks like an update on the learning model is next up.
Yes. Thank you, Chair Bogeszewski. So as I'm sure our viewers are aware, certainly our families are aware, like so many districts in Minnesota and in the metro area here, we are currently in distance learning for all grade levels. We're recently getting a little better news that it seems like, as you'll see in the presentation, some of the rates are trending downwards. And of course, we're all well aware of the good news of vaccines being approved and look forward to vaccinations and hopefully getting all students back in school, pre-pandemic styling, or, but I know that will take a while. So we'll give you an update on where we are with a few things. And we're fortunate to have with us tonight, not only Activities Director Reed Horn, but also Debbie Leegan, our exemplar nurse who serves as our COVID-19 planning coordinator. So there will be, they will be part of the presentation along with others, and I will pass it over to Josh Collins at this time.
Great. Thank you, Chair Bogeszewski, Dr. Sacoli, and members of the board. I'm going to share my screen here and present this. Dr. Sacoli, you're on my screen. Maybe can you give me a nod if it's looking right? Good, thank you. I appreciate that. So I'm going to give you, again, your, this will be familiar, the format to you. I'm going to give you some updates on where we are with our model and also some of the current data that we are seeing out there. And then I'll hand it over to my colleagues. As you know, we are currently operating in full-time distance learning for all of our grades and programs at this time. We are monitoring, as Dr. Sacoli mentioned, the dropping rates that we are seeing of COVID-19 in our both district and county. And we are expecting additional state guidance on a number of matters, possibly this week. It sounds as though Governor Walz may be holding a press conference tomorrow in which he'll be updating the state on his current executive order and what, what will be occurring after that, which will, of course, have a bearing on, on things here within our schools. And we continue to prepare for the possibility that we can start providing in-person services to our students who have significant special education needs. And while we don't have a date on that yet, we continue to prepare with the appropriate personal protective equipment and pieces that will need to be in place for that. Just as a reminder, for those who might be tuning into this meeting and who may have not been following along at each of our meetings, there are really five factors that we consider as we make a recommendation to you, the board, on our learning model. The first is that number of positive COVID-19 cases, which the county calculates per 10,000 residents in the county. We also consult with our local and state public health officials, as well as our own health services staff on what they are seeing in terms of the effects and transmissibility of COVID-19 within young people and within adults, of course, because we have our staff in buildings providing these services. We also look at the health and safety experiences that we have within our own schools, as well as observations of other schools, both locally, across the state, and across the country. The capability of our staff to adequately serve students is a significant factor that we need to look at in balancing the delivery of both distance learning academy and blended learning models. And then, of course, feedback from families, staff, and students is an absolutely critical piece as we continue to run school-level advisory committees where members of each school's community is able to talk to our principals and other local school leaders. And we also have a district-wide committee. And then, of course, testimony that might come through our channels to our school board members in our district. An update on the numbers here. You'll see that as of December 14th, the 14-day county case rate was 104.7. You'll see the, the vertical line there on November 24th, that's where we were at our last board meeting when we updated you. So it is, of course, encouraging to see that numbers have dropped a bit from there. And as Dr. Sacoli mentioned, with news of vaccines on their way, I'm sure that you all join me and the rest of the team in hoping that those numbers will continue to move downward. Here you can see the rate per 10,000 within the ZIP codes that specifically serve Roseville area schools. We are still on the higher end there at 136.3. And then we see the forecast, the seven-day forecast from the University of Minnesota looking at a further decrease that we would downbeat, possibly at 83.1 as of December 21st. Just as a reminder, the threshold at which the state suggests that districts would be, would have to operate or would need to strongly consider operating fully in distance learning is 50. So while that is a reduction, it still is, is rather high. The latest lagging data piece from the Minnesota Department of Health places our 14-day rate at 113.2, and that's as of November 28th. So I'm now going to turn the next set of slides over to Deb Leegan and let her introduce herself to you as our COVID-19 coordinator.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for inviting me here. I am one of the school nurses in Roseville and also function as the lead and for this year have been tapped the COVID coordinator. So there, we've had a lot of conversation about the fact that the CDC decided that they were going to make a recommendation, it's not a requirement, for moving from a 14-day quarantine to another option of a seven or 10-day quarantine. And this graph can, it, it demonstrates that the, the full length of quarantine of 14 days, which is what's been in place all along, is based on, it's, it's based on the infectious period of time that someone develops symptoms, and there's a higher rate of potential transmission. And as you move down to 14 days, you have, I think it's 98% of people have already demonstrated symptoms. But at seven, at seven days into the quarantine, you still have a, a risk of some transmission that is roughly around between 25 and 30%. And at 10 days, even less, where you only have, I think it's about 91% of people have developed symptoms. So looking at the different options, and there's very specific criteria when you can even go with the seven or the 10-day quarantine. So if you, with a 14-day quarantine, it's, and MDH is making it really clear, that's definitely the safest option. They, they wanted to provide alternatives that some businesses and others could opt into for a seven or 10-day quarantine. Has nothing to do with the infectious period changing, but it had more to do with making sure that people were compliant or for healthcare workers or first-line workers and firemen, police, whatever, who need to, 14 days being put out of your, set into quarantine is just too great a length of time. So, but for school settings where we're working so closely with students, truly, the 14 days is the, is the safest option. Josh, why don't you move to the next slide? So in a, what we have looked at is that the, the 10-day quarantine seems like a, a good option. We would, most people develop symptoms for sure by day four, five, six, and seven. And by the time you've reached day 10, at least 91% of people have presented their first symptom. So there's, and it wouldn't be an option for everyone because if someone did have a positive case in their house, they're considered at high enough risk that that individual would have to continue a full 14-day quarantine. It would be a really good option when we've had to close down a whole classroom because there was a positive case in the classroom. And, and then everyone who was a close contact in that classroom needs to go home, and then they wait. And if they've made it through the 10 days and they don't have a positive case in their household, that would be a good option to then potentially have those people come back to school, provided they have not had a positive, positive test. So it's, it's a way to have a safe option to shorten the quarantine time, and it is, it aligns with the CDC and which, and MDH recommendations. But with the, with the seven-day option, that's probably the next slide. With the seven-day option, in that case, a person would be asked to have a test done on day five, and it would have to be a negative test, and then they could return as early as the next day. You still are at a fairly, I, I think, for sure, too high of a risk for potential transmission, especially for people who are working in childcare and close to students in the school. And then we're back to, once again, having someone show up with a symptom, say, on day eight, nine, or 10, and then needing, you know, if they become positive, then we've, again, had more transmission at school. So even though the CDC provided these options, we, we want to entertain the possibility that the 10-day really could certainly be a usable option. The seven-day is not really a workable option for schools because you really are at a much higher risk of transmission. And the bar is pretty high, so this doesn't pertain to a lot of, a lot of people because, again, if you have a positive case in your household, you wouldn't even qualify. But for a lot of people, they would be able to shorten their quarantine time and come back into the workplace, or students would be able to come back to school and parents could get back to work. One difference is where we have typically been also screening people by way of having one major symptom or two minor symptoms. In this case, if we're shortening our quarantine, all a person would have to have is just one symptom, and then that would be reason for them to return back to quarantine and do the complete 14 days. So that's, we talked about it at the leadership team meeting, and I think there was general consensus that the seven-day, even though CDC has offered as an option and MDH is following that too, that these are simply recommendations, not requirements. And seven-day really increases the risk of more transmission at school, closing down more classrooms or more childcare, which we had to do quite a bit of this fall. A 10-day could certainly be a safe option and for, provided people follow their criteria. And we have also decided that when someone fits all the criteria for a shortened quarantine to 10 days, it would be the school nurses who would do the final screening with the individual, the staff person, or the family member for their student, and to make sure that all pieces are in place. And then we could get those people back into school a few days earlier, which would certainly be helpful to families who need to get back to work and would be beneficial to staff who are wanting to come back to work. And lastly, we wouldn't demand that they would have to shorten the quarantine. It would be offered as an option. So some people may feel safer and more comfortable to complete the full 14-day quarantine because MDH will repeatedly tell you it is by far the safest option to just stay home for the full period of time where most everyone has developed a symptom. I think it's 98% have developed a symptom by 14 days. And, and then, you know, once you have a symptom, then you would certainly want to go get tested. So if you have any questions, I'm open to questions. But anyway, that's...
Let's maybe move to, let's have Reed Hornung, our Athletics Director, perhaps provide the next few slides and then look for questions on the whole presentation.
Good evening, everybody. Excited to be here again to give you an update on activities and athletics and where they sit currently today. So we were hoping to hear from the governor late last week, and then it was scheduled for Monday. And so we were confident we would have new information for you. And then... And then it was moved to tomorrow. So tomorrow we will have more information when the governor does discuss his current executive order, which is set to expire this Friday, December 18th at midnight. And so we will see what he does, whether he extends that or not. As we know, the executive order did include all youth sports, which includes Minnesota State High School League activities and sports. And so we are currently in that executive order, waiting for further guidance. The State High School League Board did meet about a week and a half ago. And they did come up with three options or three plans, basically three different timelines of when the season could possibly start and when it would end based on the governor's executive order. The three options they put out just for timelines and for schedules, because a lot of our, our life revolves around schedules, starts December 21st is the first option. The second option is January 4th and the third option that was presented was January 18th, which is Martin Luther King Day. And what that means is if the governor were to come tomorrow and say that come Jan, or January 1st, that youth sports can return, we would not return until that next available date, which is January 4th. And so they simply put out three dates just to be prepared so that we would know how the season would pan out in regards to contests, number of days, and how that could possibly impact spring sports when they start. Because there's such a narrow window between winter and spring sports. And what they're exploring is possibly adding a few weeks that we lost currently to the backend of the winter schedule. And so that's really what the State High School League presented and what they approved. But as we all know, that's all based on what the governor decides to do in his current executive order. And the State High School League reassured us as activities directors that the governor is working very closely with MDH for all of his information in regards to closures of youth sports or possibly bringing those back. So they work hand in hand with those decisions. And so everybody in the state is waiting for more information tomorrow. And we will be prepared with more guidance as well. And just to let everybody know, we've been working and meeting very closely with schools in the metro, especially the schools in our conferences, suburban East Conference, working together to really communicate what the plan would be moving forward. I shared with you earlier that a decision was made to not allow fans into contests if we were to have them and that that would be readdressed every couple of weeks. And so those are the types of things that we're working on in regards to communicating with each other to be prepared for a season if we do have that option this year. So we're working together all over the place to make sure we provide the, the safest option we can. And we do believe that the State High School League and high school activities are the safest options for our kids. We have a lot of regulations and procedures that we follow at the high school level that not everybody follows. And so we are confident in that system and what we have. And we, we hope to be back sometime in the future. Dr. Sikoli, I believe you are next. Thank you.
So that concludes our presentation. We're certainly looking forward to any comments or questions board members may have.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none. Thank you all for bringing us up to speed on where we are. I know it's still kind of a moving playing field. We're not really sure where things are going to stand. So once again, I, I think we all applaud your efforts as district leaders in prepping for all of this and, and making sure we have the flexibility to pivot if we're able to do so. So thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to the next report and non-action item, which is an update on the early childhood program. And it looks like we have Karen Schaub and Tammy Reese, who's the program manager for early childhood with us this evening to walk us through the report. Take it away.
Evening, everyone. Glad we can be here to update you on some of the fabulous things that have been happening with our earliest learners. I'm just going to turn this over to Tammy Reese. She's got some wonderful stories to tell you and some great successes and a few challenges that face us as we continue to pro, to provide that education to our littlest learners. Tammy, would you like to start, please?
I will. Hi, everyone. I'm Tammy Reese. I supervise the early childhood programs. I'm going to share with you some updates, some new things that we're doing, some ways we've adapted as we were moving through this year and dealing with the pandemic. I'm going to cover three areas, early childhood screening, pre-K, and ECFE. I'm going to start with early childhood screening. And typically this is done in person, being that it is a developmental screening tool. We were happy that MDE approved a new tool that we can use to do this. One way it's completed is that parents can do it at home with their, with their child. They complete all the paperwork, send it back to us and a screener scores everything and does a follow-up phone call or Zoom call. But also teachers can assist families. And we have also done this through a Zoom process, using Zoom and interpreters is needed to complete the process. So all in all, it's been a really positive way to, to continue doing screenings. So we were happy about the new tool that we could use. I'm going to talk next, a little bit about pre-K. So we have been in distance learning this fall and also a few weeks in blended learning. I just wanted to show you what this is, is what you might see on CSA in a pre-K classroom. You see the different areas of lessons that we focus on literacy, math, social emotional, and social justice. This fall, we also added Zoom into our classes. We did not do that in the spring. And we were really looking to provide and connect more with the families and the students. And Zoom has allowed us to do that. Connecting and building relationships has always been a focus of our programs. And it's just really neat to see this happening through the, through a virtual format. I've been visiting some of the Zoom meetings and actually can see the connection, the rapport the teachers have with the young students. Students are engaging with their peers in small groups. There's some teachers doing work with individuals as we're learning about syllables or letter names. But at the core of all of it, you can actually see and feel the relationship that's being built. So that's really encouraging. We've also had some listening sessions with parents. And one of the things that parents did say was that they really appreciated the connection and relationship that is happening and it's actually keeping them engaged. So like I said, that was really encouraging for teachers to hear as well that the work they are doing in connecting with students is happening during distance learning. Just wanted to show you a couple of pictures of when we were in blended learning. We had a few weeks and the teachers, you know, really appreciated, even though it was a short time, they got to meet the students in person, which was a really positive part of the blended learning. And then we moved back into distance learning again. Just a couple of things that I wanted to highlight that are happening in pre-K. We use a work, it's called work sampling. It's a developmental assessment. And this year we moved to an online system to actually complete the assessment. And we actually upload evidence for the different indicators of development. We're able to sort the data, analyze the data in a way that we haven't been able to before because we, we were using like paper and pencil. So we can also track progress. This is really impacting the next point, which is our PLC collaborative teams. We have been really working to improve the work in our teams. Now we have a way, a really usable way to use the data to create goals, progress monitor, provide interventions. This year we are focusing on social emotional development. And each of the teams has created a goal around social emotional development. While we did this, we discovered that 92% of the families participated. It was such an increase in the, you know, just the engagement with the families that most of the teachers have now said, you know, we're not going to go back to the old way. This was so important to meet the families and create that connection before school started that we're going to figure out how to continue doing it in this way. It was so positive. I'm going to move on and talk a little bit about ECFE. And I will say that this has been during distance learning in that one and two-year-olds, it can, families with very young children, it can be very difficult to engage them through a screen like Zoom. So we've really thought about some different ways to engage families. A couple of things are listed here. We've, are working with Christina Robertson with the Facebook Live Parenting Education with the cultural liaisons and that has been going really well. So we will continue that. We've been, we did like a 30 minute, you know, some parenting topics, some parenting strategies. We also did a park and play, which was very popular. Families just loved it. So that was outdoors. But they did get a chance to see some of the teachers. And we also did a drop-in and play via Zoom, which was also very popular. This just is an overview of some of the new, some of the things we offered this fall. I will add to that we're doing virtual home visits. And that was also something, a way we could provide individual parenting support, either through Zoom or a phone call. So we had that happening as well. Just a couple of pictures of our park and play I wanted to share. The families really enjoyed that. Got a little bit cold now, but when we can, we will start this up again. All right. So I just want to move on and talk about some new things that we have happening. We also have learned like through some of our listening sessions that parents are looking for some specific topics. So as we move forward and offer our drop-in and play, we are going to create some really- called managing emotions during a pandemic. We tend to see more participation with something like that than just an open drop-in and play. So we're working right now coming up with some specific topics. Add CSA to ECFE to provide more asynchronous learning opportunities. So right now we're creating classes that, with a lot just activities that parents can do on their own time with probably a few parent meetups through Zoom. We also found a way in CSA that we can do some- Zoom. We're going to do a parent book discussion. We're going to continue the virtual home visits and the Facebook Live. And the parent educators right now are working on recording five-minute parenting tip videos. And what we are, our plan is here is to provide those to our pre-K families through CSA. Just another way that we can reach more people with our parenting information. Connecting with childcare. We know there are a lot of children in childcare. So we want to reach out and provide some more connections there. One thing that we are going to do is get information out to childcare providers about early childhood screening that they can share with families. We can also work with providers to see how they can assist us with doing the screening possibly. We already have been going to childcare centers to do possibilities here that we want to explore. We're also going to offer virtual learning pods. What this would be is that a childcare provider could set this up with an early childhood teacher and we could visit via Zoom with different lessons, literacy, math, social emotional, learning and activities. We want to provide some of the materials that go along with this, just to- provide that learning and connection with providers. And our toyland library to childcare providers and have a system where online they can request different activity bags. Also maybe some parenting information that they could share with their families. We're also going to- doing our childcare provider training. We have done most recent, the most recent one we were going to do was last March and it got canceled because of all that happened. There's a 10. So we actually have one coming up in January. And we are going to focus on early childhood screening, early intervention and making a referral and just focusing on creating an inclusive environment within a childcare setting. So all of these things, just wanted to- share and give you an update. And we know it's been real sheer. But we also just looked at this time as a way to challenge ourselves in early childhood to, to figure out maybe some new and different ways. Frame our thinking about what's happening as an opportunity to expand, enhance our programs. And we really, you know, we're really trying to- and even when we're back in person, many of these things I think will be still part of our program because it's just helping us to reach more families. So I think through it all, that's the good news about all that's been happening. Thank you.
Thanks, Tammy. Thanks, Tammy. I'll open it up to my colleagues for any questions or comments. Curtis?
No, no, no questions, just a comment. Really impressive, all, all of the, the changes and, you know, things you guys have been able to come up with. That's, that, that's, you know, again, all in the middle of a pandemic, you know, that's, that's, that's amazing. So my-
Thank you.
Thanks, Curtis. Anyone else? Looks like we're good. So again, Tammy, thank you very much. And Karen, thanks for introducing that to us. And we'll look forward to all the great things our early children have to look forward to as we move ahead. Thanks very much.
Yeah, thank you very much.
My internet, just a side note, my Wi-Fi connection here at the laptop I'm using in the district center is occasionally blanking out and going to weird noises. And I got signs up occasionally saying that my internet connection is unstable. So if I seem to blank out or wig out for a minute, that's what's going on. If I need to, maybe I'll drop my picture and just go to voice. I know sometimes that helps. So just wanted to alert everyone what's going on. I don't know what, if anyone else has experienced that. Over the last five minutes, just started happening about five minutes ago. So just a housekeeping note as we move ahead. With that, I think we are then ready to go on to our action items this evening. And first up is the audit report and potential acceptance by us. And Sherri Thompson, our business director, I believe, will be leading us through this. Sherri, take it away.
I'm thrilled to have Dennis and Lars this evening. They have the partnership and assembling our financial statements and the support and technical help that they give us. I know the board has heard from me a lot, especially tonight, earlier. And you hear me blab a lot about finances. So I'm Dennis and John. You can share the present presentation. I think you have
What's going out to the public? Are they seeing the glitches and stuff?
They're seeing the glitches. Control, you are, okay, we should be back now. Control A. No, we lost them again. We're still connected.
Like freezes for a second or two, then it comes back, then I get that kind of thing going.
Oh, crap.
Is it this machine or is it the district?
I don't, I've been trying to monitor what's going on in the back room. I can't seem to.
A year of doing a virtual audit. So we really could not say enough kind words for all the hard work that her and her staff went through to not only keep the district running in a, you know, COVID-19 environment. I can't even imagine, you know, trying to find the inventive ways of trying to come up with ways to keep the district running and, you know, keep the inventive ways of spending the CRF funding and all the different ways on any given day that you have is coming at you. And I just can't even imagine, plus getting a, you know, some 175-page, three different audit documents to the board, you know, to keep the Office of the State Auditor and the MDE happy and things like that. So anyway, we just are really appreciative of all the hard work that they go through. And this is a really good audit report that we're delivering tonight. And as in past years, what we've done is we're extracting certain elements of the executive audit summary, which is our communication as your, as your school district auditors. We are taking certain elements out of the executive audit summary to communicate to you in a PowerPoint. But to the extent you have questions or comments from any of the documents, you've got the district's CAFER. A CAFER is a comprehensive annual financial report. And that's, I think it was 145 pages, something like that. And then you've got our executive audit summary, which is, you know, some firms refer to that as the management letter. We, we think it's more comprehensive than that. We want that to be something that's insightful and got meaningful commentary that you can't find somewhere else. We want it to be, you know, meaningful, timely, insightful commentary that you can't find somewhere else. And hopefully you find that easily readable. And I think that's 30-some pages, if I recall right. And then you've got the single audit report. Well, I think so. The total of those is something like 175-some pages. So to the extent you have questions or comments, you know, we're certainly willing to have you interrupt those and we'll certainly stand for questions at the end as well. But I'm going to turn it over to John Lorenzini to kind of buzz through the nuts and bolts of the things that you're hiring an auditor to do, because it's more than just the audit opinion on the financial statements. He's going to run through the different aspects of the different elements of the audit report. And then I'll, I'll come in to talk about some financial results. We're going to kind of tag-team it here. And to the extent you've got questions, don't hesitate to interject those as we go along if you'd like. Take it away, John.
Thank you, Dennis. Yeah. So like Dennis said, I'll just kind of briefly go over some a high-level summary of the audit results. The first thing being the audit opinion on the financial statements. That's obviously the main thing you hire us for, just to make sure that the financial statements are in accordance with government accounting standards, have no material misstatements. And we issue that's a clean audit opinion. It's the best opinion you can get. So that's great to report. As part of a audit under governmental auditing standards, or what we call Yellow Book standards, we also have to determine if there are any significant non-compliance or anything like that that would have an impact on the financial statements. And that's what these Yellow Book compliance findings, that's what that would be. And we're pleased to report that there was nothing significant that would fall into that category. As part of planning our audit, we walked through the district's internal control processes. It's part of our risk assessment process. And as part of that process, if anything comes up, any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control, we report them to you as the school board. And we are pleased to report that there were no such findings this year, which is great to report. And I, as I'm sure we've talked about before with the board members, a single audit is required anytime a school district spends more than $750,000 of federal funding. And so for Roseville area schools, this is obviously just an annual part option in Title I programs. And we had one internal control finding in the child nutrition program. And it was related to procurement and more specifically, suspension and debarment requirements. And so essentially, anytime you make a procurement with federal funds that exceeds $25,000, there's a requirement to verify that that vendor is not suspended or debarred by the federal government. Basically, there's a website where you can go and look up a vendor and make sure that they're not suspended or debarred. And then ideally print, you know, a screenshot of that, just as evidence of your internal control process. So during the single audit, we had selected the transaction. And the district did have a screenshot of this verification. As auditors, you know, we're always looking for that internal control piece. And if we don't have evidence of the board. So nothing to be concerned about. It's more of just kind of a tiki-taki auditor thing. We like to see those documentation. And so just something that I think, I'm sure will be retained going forward. But we like to see the evidence of those internal controls in place. Moving on, the Minnesota Office of the State Auditor issues a very long checklist, actually, of all the state statutes that apply to Minnesota school districts. And as part of our audit, we complete that checklist. And we're pleased to report that we only had one compliance finding that popped up. And that was related to, there's a state statute that requires Minnesota school districts to pay invoices within either the terms of the invoice, or if there are no terms, within 35 days. This is a very common finding. It's more common for us to have this than not report this finding. And I was actually, this afternoon, I was looking, and one of the invoices was from March. And another was during Christmas break, which was barely over the 35 days. So definitely not a big concern, especially the invoice in March. We all know what started happening in March. So this is not something for the board to be concerned about at all. But it's just something that we're required to report to you. Looking at some new accounting standards, this year's financial statements had one new standard that was implemented. I think either from us or from Sherri, this was GASB 84. And the big impact it had on school districts was student activity funds were no longer considered a separate audit and a separate financial statement. They were brought under board control and they were rolled into the general fund this year. So there's a couple of pages shorter of your reports, and that activity was rolled into the general fund. And we always like to keep the district kind of updated on upcoming accounting standards. And so GASB 87 is also a standard that you've probably heard about from us a number of years now. That standard was actually supposed to be effective for this, the year that we're currently in. Fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021. And, but due to the pandemic, the GASB board actually delayed that by a year. So that lease standard is now effective for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022. And we've, we've worked with Sherri and her team on this. Pretty much the main thing is just kind of gathering all the information on the district's leases together. That'll be coming up. This is the third year of CAFER reporting. Dennis always likes to point out that you're not required to present a CAFER or a comprehensive annual financial report. It's essentially, the district is holding itself to a higher standard. There is a few more elements in your report. There's a transmittal letter that Sherri puts together. There's some statistical tables that go back 10 years showing data. So it's, it's a lot more work, but it really presents a great picture of the district. And given that this is the third year of CAFER reporting, this is the second year that the district received their Certificate of Excellence in Reporting, which is on page 11 of your CAFER. So it's great to see the district get that award for the second time. Dennis?
Well, it's just a slide from the executive audit summary, just looking at enrollment from a particular, you know, historical perspective of the way students were served by, by type, you know, just elementary versus secondary, basically. So just over the last five years, it really hasn't changed at all over those five years. So it's just, you can see from between 2019 and 2020 that enrollment virtually was unchanged, 0.01% between 2019 and 2020. So that's really all that says. In terms of the next slide is probably the more interesting of the two ways of looking at enrollment, because it really jumps out at you that what a great job the district is doing in terms of being an attractive place to attract students. Because it really shows, in terms of open enrollment, the great job that the district is doing in terms of attracting students. I really like how, in fact, we need to pick up on this to show other districts how the percentage of net residents served versus all enrollment served. I don't know why we haven't presented this particular dataset in the same way at other school districts, because it really is a great way to present the information. It's just a great, great piece of information. So it's something to really present what a great job you're doing in terms of presenting it for me. You know, programmatically, it's just a real great demonstration of having a program that is attractive to families to have reasons to have their kids come to school here. In terms of the next slide, another great, you know, I mean, you can really exaggerate things, I suppose, if you wanted to. But, you know, historically, fund balance has been a real discussion point for Roseville area schools. So it's really an interesting, successful commentary when we can say, look what the positive outcome that happened in 2020 with the unassigned fund balance. So it's a very positive development. So I don't know that audits are always looking backwards. So I don't, you know, we don't know what's happening in 2021, but we have to take time to celebrate a very positive development when it happens. So, you know, as a board, you should be very proud of what the turnaround in terms of what you're able to accomplish. There's lots of good things to talk about with this audit. But one of the most positive from, from an auditor's perspective is, is the fact that you've been able to focus on building up the unassigned fund balance. It's a very positive development. So congratulations with that. It's a very good, good turn of events. Very good. This is, you know, obviously, just looking at a 10-year historical perspective of total fund balance and just the unassigned category of fund balance. So again, you've seen the lows. And now to be able to have turned that corner and to kind of return to normalcy is a very good, good thing. And again, what we always want to not lose focus of is, is that that represents some hard decisions that have to be made and tough work and the support of the community. Those are all things, important elements, you know, tough decision-making, but the support of the community. And really commendable in terms of the decisions that have to be made behind the scenes to make those kind of results happen. So very commendable and good job. And, you know, just keep it up. Very good job. Thank you.
All right. Looking at this next slide, it's just kind of a snapshot of the general fund's revenues by source, going back to the last five years. And I dropped little percentages in there too, so you can kind of see the breakout each year. General fund revenue for fiscal year 20 was just underneath 108 million. And this was approximately 2.5 million or 2.46% more than budgeted. And in the management's discussion and analysis section of your financial statements, Sherri has noted that if you adjust for the unbudgeted student activities, activity, and the fiscal agent flow-through revenues, the variance is only about 1.8% higher than budget. So it's great to see, you know, those revenues coming in close to what was budgeted. Looking now at the expenditure side of the general fund. General fund expenditures for fiscal year 20 were 103,885,000. And this was approximately 780,000 or 0.74% less than budget. And once again, if you adjust for those student activities and fiscal flow-through that, you know, weren't budgeted, it was 1.8% less than budget. And this was primarily due to lower salary costs and reduced contracted services, which obviously included things like transportation services, utilities, and substitute teacher costs. So those are some of the factors coming in, you know, under, below budget. Looking now at the food service fund operations. You can see the impact of distance learning here quite, quite obviously. Revenue was 4,268,000, which was approximately 14% less than budget. Similarly, with expenditures, they were approximately 13% less than budget. So the change in fund balance in this fund was actually within $30,000 of what you had budgeted. But obviously, both revenue and expense were significantly lower this year. And then kind of looking at the underneath drivers of that, meals served to students. You can see total meals served in fiscal year 20 were 583,000, and that was down 29% from prior year. So obviously, just the impact of distance learning here. And then turning next to the community service fund operations. Revenues in the community service fund were 7,221,000, which was approximately 15% less than originally budgeted. And expenses were 7,466,000, and that was approximately 12% less than budget. So in the community service fund, the bottom line showed a decrease in fund balance of 245,000, whereas an increase of 31,000 had been budgeted. So you can see the impact on community service fund programs here for the fiscal year 20.
On the general fund expenditures per student, you know, you don't generally see districts able to hold these costs per student this flat. You know, that takes a lot of hard work. And, you know, one of the things that helps you in that regard to keep it that flat is that a lot of your capital expenditures are occurring over in the building construction fund. Obviously, when you have such a significant amount of building construction going on over in the building construction have a lot of the outside of the general fund. So you don't have a lot of that happening. So that helps a lot in that regard. But still, you can tell that there's a lot of cost containment on here. And a lot of that did need to happen, you know, obviously with the fund balance being what it was and things like that. But again, this is, again, a very telling story in terms of the success that you're having in terms of what needed to have happen in terms of keeping those costs per student down. So that on a normal progression, just the normal inflationary costs would have you, for any governmental entity, kind of going off to the right. And the fact that you're keeping them very flat is just a, you know, real success story, contributing to the success you're having in terms of the ending fund balances. It's just a good, good success. And not to be taken for granted. You know, it's a tremendous success to the success the board's having, making those tough decisions. In terms of the profiles data, you know, some of the things that were coming out of the year, you know, we don't have to keep rehashing it. But one of the things that I always like to comment on, as you've heard me say in past years, is this is a little bit misleading, because when you run a successful community service program, community education program, the cost, when you divide those costs on a per ADM basis, it's very misleading to have community service, because those are where participants are choosing to participate in it. So the fact that you have a higher instance per ADM is a very positive thing, even though on a graph, on this kind of a display, it could be interpreted by people with an agenda as a negative thing, where it should be the opposite of that. Where you have, you know, on a per ADM basis, on a, you know, where it's generated on a per fee basis, the revenues are generating or driving the costs. It's a very highly positive thing that you have $1,000 per ADM versus $800, you know, for the seven county metro area average for community service. So the fact that that's driving up your totals above the seven county metro areas, it's a misleading indicator. I'd just like to point that out. And then also remind people that the 2020 averages aren't available yet because the apples-to-apples comparison hasn't been published yet. So 2019 is the comparative data to the profiles data. So just as a reminder. So on the next slide, then, I think we're just want to thank you very much for the opportunity to serve the district. It's been a great relationship, and we always appreciate working with the district staff. They're always very responsive to our requests for information. They're very, very good to work with and very much appreciate how they're kind, all the staff are very good to work with and they're very responsive to us, as we say. So we're very appreciative of that. To the extent you do have questions as you have a chance to dig into those 175-some pages of information, our contact information is on the next page. So never hesitate to, we have to update John's title, actually. He was promoted recently to director. So we have to update that information, John. So congratulations to him. He continues to make good progress in our firm. So as I was saying, though, to the extent you do have questions, never hesitate to use this as a sounding board or to ask us questions or ask comments along and things like that. So with that, we've passed along what we wanted to communicate with you, but we'll stand for any questions that you've got for us.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, John. So fellow board members, any questions or comments for the group here?
I got one. Yeah, I'd like to start off with saying thanks. Thanks again, Dennis and John, and especially Sheri and her staff. I know this is a lot of work. So I really thank you, everyone, for putting all these reports together. I did want to mention, and I know running through the reports, if I'm not mistaken, this might be a Sheri question, but our bond rating has improved. Am I, did I, I think I saw something or a slide or one of the pages that it improved. And I'm wondering if the unassigned fund balance that we know is better, if that in general affects the district's bond rating? And just, is that one of the things? Yeah, just was wondering.
Yeah, our bond rating hasn't improved. It hasn't been revisited. We'll test that bond rating, because we've been pushing for that. We will test that bond rating. It remains the same, but we will test that. I have to figure out what month I'm in. Probably in the spring, because we'll be looking at when we go out for the lease on KPN. We're doing the certificates of participation, gentlemen, for about $20 million, just to let you know, to fund a portion of the new Fairview Education Center. But fund balance is a huge factor. You are so right. That's been the one thing, everything's been in our favor, and that's the one thing that has held us back, is the minimal, minimal fund balance that's been cited every time we do that we've either had our annual, oh, this year, we didn't, we haven't had our annual surveillance visit yet. So yes, we should be hearing from Moody's. So we'll bring that up as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Kitty?
I had an opportunity to read the full report, and it's very comprehensive. And I wanted to thank you for all the different ways, Sheri and Dennis and John, that you've sliced and diced at the information, because it really gives you some different angles to look at the information, to try to interpret what's happening. And I just thank you for the comprehensive nature of all that's done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for our guests or Sheri?
Could I just add just a couple of comments? Number one, yes. I am very, we are very fortunate in Roseville to have the team we have, whether it's in the business office, even with other directors, leadership with the superintendent. I mean, we have, we have a good team, and everyone, I think, is very accountable. I'm especially fortunate with the business office staff. And as, you know, we've added some staff in the last couple of years, and they've taken on a lot of responsibility. Denise, as you know, John, is like taking on so much more responsibility and is learning so much more. And I appreciate being able to reach out to CLA at any time of year when we need help with technical assistance or what have you. So, and I appreciate the consistency with staff, seeing that, you know, being able to lean on kind of the same staff every year. You've been able to retain staff, and that's really helpful to us as your clients, because we don't have to play a lot of catch-up. I mean, your crew can come out. And even with doing this virtually this year, your crew hits the ground running, and you know us. And it just helps. And when we have questions or don't understand, you're very good about explaining. Because, you know, I've always looked at things more operationally. I am not a CPA. The numbers are very important, but you helped me through some of the technical aspects, and it's much appreciated. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Sheri. Any final thoughts? If not, then I'd welcome a motion to accept the financial statements and audited supplemental information.
So moved.
Todd said he moved.
I'll second.
Kitty will second. Any further discussion amongst us as board members? Seeing no hands up, Todd, could you take the vote, please?
Certainly. Clerk Anderson votes aye. Chair Bogushevsky?
Aye.
Treasurer Goggins?
Aye.
Director Johnson?
Aye.
Director Shaw?
Aye.
And Director Chu?
Aye.
All right, that passed. And once again, thank you, Principal Hogovin and Director Lorenzini for your work and your help on this. And we'll look forward to seeing you next time around.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
With that, we'll move on to the next item. And I believe our Director of Human Resources, Lisa Chang, will come back with the second reading for proposed revisions to the policy for 12 family and medical leave. Director Chang, take it away.
Great. Thank you for having me on the board. I am here again for the family and medical leave policy. And this is the second reading. The first reading, we didn't have any recommended changes, unless you guys have some today. But I'm asking for approval.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, again, I'd ask for a motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
Great. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Todd, take the vote, please.
Clerk Anderson votes aye. Chair Bogushevsky?
Aye.
Treasurer Goggins?
Aye.
Director Chu?
Aye.
Director Johnson?
Aye.
Director Shaw?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes. Next item, Lisa, it looks like you're still up. And we'll be sharing some nonlicensed staff layoffs that we need to act on.
All right. Thank you. I'm here up again, unfortunately. I'm here to request for approval of layoffs for nonlicensed staff for school year 2020 due to one or more of the following reasons: discontinuance of position, decrease in student enrollment in programs, and/or the financial condition of the school district. Please know that we will do our best, or we are doing our best to find positions for these employees within the district while adhering to collective bargaining agreements.
Thank you. Any questions for Lisa around this? Doesn't look like any. Again, I entertain a motion to accept and approve the layoffs as presented.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion among ourselves? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, could you roll us around again, please?
Certainly. Clerk Anderson votes aye. Chair Bogushevsky?
Aye.
Treasurer Goggins?
Aye.
Director Johnson?
Aye.
Director Chu?
Aye.
And Director Shaw. I think you're muted. Frank?
Aye, I just said it.
There you go.
Thank you.
You got it, everybody.
All right, I think
Thank you.
that's approved. Thanks, Lisa. I know it's a tough thing, so we appreciate your dedication in trying to help these folks find something else within the district with the limitations that we have there.
Thank you.
With that, I think Sheri, we're welcoming you back to lead us through the discussion around certifying the levy. I'm out.
Yes, you're stuck with me again. Prior to the regular board meeting this evening, we did hold the public truth in taxation hearing. And what we are looking for is approval of the levy in the amount of $41,104,902.1. And you had approved the preliminary levy on September 22nd. So I don't have anything to add to that, but I will certainly stand for questions.
Do we have any? Looks like none. Then again, could we get a motion to approve this final levy amount?
I will move on the school board, oh, sorry. What was that? I will move the, approve the final levy amount to fund the 2021, 2022 school year as presented.
Second.
And Rose seconded. All right. Any further discussion among ourselves? Hearing none. Todd, could you take the vote?
Clerk Anderson votes aye. Chair Bogushevsky, sorry.
Aye.
Treasurer Goggins?
Aye.
Director Shaw?
Aye.
Director Chu?
Aye.
And Director Johnson?
Aye.
All right, that is approved. With that, thank you, and thank you, Sheri. I apologize. I should have thanked you.
No, no.
Thanks very much for all this and all the work. We ahead of time and everything, as we've said earlier this evening. So really appreciate it. With that, we have board reports. Anyone want to start out with sharing anything this evening? Frank?
Bring this up here. Just a second, a second, a second. Here it goes. All right, we had, we were looking at, so I had a CEAC meeting. That's the Community Education Advisory Committee last week. And we talked a little bit about school-age childcare. And apart from the fairly robust numbers that we have for tier-one workers, I say school age, but I meant, yeah, school-age childcare. We don't have very much interest in it. But there's a survey out that's gauging interest in that. And we'll be finding out about that soon. But certainly, we're not going to have that during the Christmas or the holiday period. Meals on Wheels has 400 to 500 additional meals per month are being served to people affected by COVID on the new plan. And so this is funded through January at this point, but we're hoping for more COVID relief funds to continue funding that. And you all saw the custom ink Roseville, hashtag Roseville Strong initiative to raise funds with masks and T-shirts with the hashtag Roseville Strong. There was a 9/16 meeting earlier this week. Just a second now. I've managed to lose my... Here we go. And 9/16 had paused their one-on-one, they were carrying on one-on-one student services mostly for, when I say one-on-one, I mean, one teacher to one student in particularly high-need cases. That was paused at Thanksgiving, but started up again last Thursday, just for this last week before the holidays. And then will be paused again until mid-January. But they're trying to do that in this case, and it's like 60 students. And they're trying to help those students as much as possible. And one of the new ways that they're going to be doing that, maybe starting even as early as the end of this week, is that they've built a, what they call a mobile education center, which is a 20-foot trailer, which goes along behind one of the vans. And it's fully equipped inside to be like a classroom that they would have for special services. It has all of the AV things. It has a comfortable place to sit and consult. And it even has a place for parents, you know, room for one student and up to three staff, and also for parents if they need to be part of it. And so this is for assessment and for delivery of some special services that the student can't be brought into the building. And it sort of brings the building to the student. It's a new thing, and we'll see how that gets working in the near future. We had an update on the Grow Your Own initiatives with the We had an update on the Grow Your Own initiatives with the University of Minnesota and the University of St. Thomas. A total of 54 teachers from Northeast Metro 916 and member districts have graduated from the U of M program since its inception in 2014, and there are currently 26 education assistants or paraprofessionals, that's, that's what we're drawing on for these programs, from 916 and member districts currently enrolled in the St. Thomas program, and the first cohort will be graduating in 2021, that is, that is next year. And lastly, we retained a search firm, Ken La Croix, for the superintendent search, and we're hoping to have a new person in place by April. And that's it, that's it for me.
Thank you, Frank. Next, anyone? Very reticent group tonight. Kitty, go ahead. I think Kitty was just being polite, but no one else wanted to grab the pork chop first, so go ahead, Kitty.
Okay, I have a few different reports. I had a chance to attend Emmett Williams' All School Meeting, which was a real treat. The book study for the, the month of November was Just Ask by Sonia Sotermaier, and there's a portion of the book which talks about, you know, what you can see on the outside than what you don't see on the inside, and that theme was used where staff talked about what students can see or other staff from them on the outside and what's inside that people can't see. And then they had students do that as well, and it was very interactive, they were included some things like Simon Says, and, I mean, these kids were just really engaged and actively participating, and it was a real treat to see what was happening. Attended the Rams Town Hall meeting, and not surprisingly, it focused on a lot of logistics around ending the trimester grading, starting of the new trimester. But one thing I thought you'd find interesting was that both families and staff mentioned the value of the conferences and how that really helped build the connection, and also gave a lot of feedback to the administration and teachers around what could be done differently or better, or where were people facing challenges. And based on that, they've developed what they're calling the Tips for Success, and so every newsletter over a seven-week period will include a different topic. For example, the first one will be around using the Zoom camera. They strongly encourage that, but they don't want to require it because there are extenuating circumstances that certainly would be difficult for some people to have it on. But also things like, how do you use the office hours? They've even taken that feedback already and, and talked to students about how to use it, and they've already seen an increase in the usage based on that, because students just didn't know what, what was acceptable to do with the teacher office hours, or things like sleep, eye strain, organization, iPad, parental control, and parental resources were all topics that they were going to provide some, some feedback on. So that was interesting. Like with every session I have had, parents are obviously lots of questions around when we're going to be changing our learning model and, and how we make that decision, which administration clearly shared at this meeting and at other meetings. The, I had a chance to attend as well the Harambee Town Hall meeting, which we're going to call Community Conversations in the Future, and, and in addition to the things around the pandemic and, and education, they covered two topics. One is the turnaround arts program that, at the school, which is very exciting. It's a national program, and they're in their second year of the program, and, and the program provided funds for professional development and community engagement, and then also some for art supplies and music equipment, and they've been using that to really incorporate into the curriculum and variety of things. And one thing that is complete but hasn't been unveiled yet to the community is a mural where there were students involved in helping define what was the school, how to capture some of the elements and dimensions of the school in a mural, and the mural is being done by Peyton Scott Russell, who is the graffiti artist for the George Floyd mural. And it was really exciting to hear how the students were engaged and, and what they've come up with. He did give us a sneak preview to those at the session, but that will be really fun when that's out. But just the whole project and the arts elements and dimensions and, and learning some different items that they can use in the classroom was real exciting. And then he shared the first elements of the school improvement plan, which thankfully he can use, they're using the same plan for school improvement as they're using for the turn of arts report that they have to put together, so it's not duplicative work, but was getting parental feedback on that, and that was well-received in terms of giving some feedback. Had a chance to attend the quarterly finance committee meeting, and I continue to be impressed by the information shared and the depth of understanding of the group and the questions that they always ask. We're really fortunate to have community members with expertise around finance that share their time with the district to provide input around the finance situation. One thing that was discussed, for example, is as we're moving forward, you know, the number around how many students do we think we'll have for next year, which is a very difficult number to predict. I mean, we've had some decrease due to the pandemic, how much will come back? I mean, some preliminary estimates from the district were shared, we're thinking around 75%, but that's, you know, it, it's, it's, it's an unknown, of course, and they had a really strong suggestion that I know the district is planning to follow up on, which is to contact each of the families that have left the district as to understand why they, you know, why they left or what it would take to get them back, and to give us a better estimate on, on, on what we can expect for next year, because that's such a strong impact on our funds that come into the district. But they also had a lot of really good questions about, you know, the audit and some other dimensions, which is always really useful information. And that's it.
Great, thank you very much. Informative as always. Anyone else? Todd?
Yes. I had an opportunity, along with my colleague Mike, to attend the first-ever virtual MSBA delegate assembly on Wednesday, December 2nd. We were a group of, or we were part of 134 MSBA delegates from around the state, getting together on a Wednesday night. We first listened to him and Professor David Schultz reflect on his views and his thoughts of the 2020 election that preceded the actual delegate assembly, but it was a great time for all of us to get together, and I applaud the MSBA staff for how organized and the role of voting on 11 resolutions, not as many as last year, but trust me, we still had some wonderful in-depth conversations. I don't think we got done until after 9:00. 11 resolutions that I think all of them passed, but one. But these past resolutions are going to go to the MSBA's government relations staff, and they, they help to form the basis for MSBA's legislative agenda, that I think we've seen in some of the, the emails, you know, the next legislative session for next year. But I thoroughly enjoyed the entire process. That's two delegate assemblies I've been a part of now, helping to represent Roosevelt Area Schools along with Mike. And, you know, I probably will seek maybe another two-year term on it, but I encourage my fellow board members as well. I don't know if there'll be openings or not, but they usually will let us know, but I know Curtis has also done it in the past, but thoroughly enjoyed it. It's a great way to discuss issues that are important to all of us. Yeah, I had a great time. I'm sure Michael had more to say, but yeah, that was great. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Curtis?
One, just want to echo what Todd said. Delegate Assembly is a great way to, to get involved, which leads me to my report. Been working with AMSD. This January, we'll have officially our legislative session preview, so everything has been moving towards this, being able to, to get in front of some legislators. Hopefully, the governor is going to join us, but, you know, the, the big thing right now is, is funding, you know? What, what's our funding going to look like? And the, the second kind of big thing is, is a constitutional amendment for education that's been growing around, and the MSD has been, the members of MSD have made some suggestions about some, some changes that, that we'd like to see, and that's probably going to show, I mean, we're, we'll, we'll see, you know, what, what happens with that, but that will definitely come up this session. See, had a meeting, met with Dr. Favor at the American and Parent Committee, and actually they're, they're, they're actually there meeting tonight, but, and that's a really, if you have, if you have some, some bandwidth, and this, this goes out to anyone who's watching, you know, they, they want more involved, you know, please feel free to, to, to join the committee, the committee meetings. They, they want more people to, to show up, but the, the, the parents are getting, right now are getting ready to, sorry, the parents are getting ready to, for their yearly meeting with the board to let us know if, you know, if we're in compliance and things they'd like to see, so. So, Dr. Favor, do, do we know, do we know what, when that is? When they're expected to show up in front of the board?
I believe they suggest in February.
February, okay. All right, so, so they'll be coming up, so. And obviously, when they're making discussions like that, I try, when they're having discussions, I, I try to not be in, hang out part of those discussions because I'm, I'm on the board, so that's, that's the word, so. That's all I have for right now.
Anyone else? Rose, anything from you this evening?
No, I don't know what happened to the two weeks, it's been...
It's been quick, hasn't it?
Yeah, quick, and my, yeah, my, my daytime job took over.
Yeah.
Totally took over.
Great, so I think everyone except me has chimed in. I just had a couple of things. One, as Todd said, he and I were able to attend the virtual delegate assembly, excellent report. The only thing I might add, as might be surprising to no one, is that the top two of the 11 resolutions is to really urge the legislature to allow districts to use pupil counts and free and reduced lunch counts from 2019 to calculate revenue and calculate compensatory revenue for this, this coming year so that districts aren't harmed by the dip in enrollment that all the schools suffered because of, of COVID with 2020. So heaven only knows how the legislature would react to that or any of the other resolutions, but those are the top two, was really to kind of try to protect that funding. The other, other thing, it's not so much a report, is just a reminder to us, and I think it ties into what, what Todd mentioned also, that January, our next meeting will be our annual organizational session, and so we'll either renew, re-up, or make adjustments as we might want to our roles, obviously not just the officer roles, but our assignments representing, like, you know, Frank with 916 and Todd as MSBA delegate, that kind of thing. So if you don't know what those are, I know that Michelle Tessom keeps a roster of who's all signed up for what, including the school representatives and the parent committee and active action committee representatives, all that kind of stuff. So to the degree that anyone would want to check those out and then change or, or, or move or, or do something new or different, then we'll be talking about that in January. Those were the only things I had, so with that, I think Dr. Sikoli will move to your superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chair Bogushevsky. I'd like to start by thanking the community for passing bond referendum in November of 2017, and we continue to meet timelines and remain within budget on our construction projects. It's really resulting in more modern facilities, including infrastructure, and most of the projects are complete. At the schools, we've got two that are still going, of course, the third and final phase at Roosevelt High School and the new building at the current Fairview site, so we're thankful for that. That means better things for our students and staff and community. And as we're updating our facilities, we need to, of course, look towards having resources to provide a superb education to bring us back to better after the pandemic subsides, and that bond referendum money, of course, can only be used for facilities and not for operating our schools. Our current board approved operating levy expires if voters don't renew it in November of 2021. Our students need more stable funding for their schools. We have been good stewards by enacting substantial budget reductions in recent years, and the school district has a real need for increased operating revenue and also realizes that many people in our community are facing increased financial challenges associated with the pandemic. So we do look forward to partnering with our community to determine how we can provide a new and better education that is sustainable. I certainly want to congratulate Director Johnson on his well-deserved MSBA Rising Star Award, which was presented to him earlier in tonight's evening. Curtis has accomplished so much as a board member, and of course, will continue to excel in the future, so we thank you for that and congratulations. And I would just like to close by saying that the development of COVID-19 vaccines has certainly provided hope for many in a number of ways, hope for an end to the pandemic. This may also be a crucial step in returning our students full-time to school sooner rather than later. I am thankful for the ongoing work of our staff in preparing for these transitions. It's been a year like no other, and they've worked hard, and, you know, and some of it can be frustrating, and also for creating a strengthened distance learning experience for our students. I also appreciate the patience and understanding of our community as we continue to work towards providing a safe and effective learning environment, and I do think we will get through this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Sikoli. With that, we do have a new agenda item that we approved, and just so that everyone perhaps watching understands what's going on, we've, we've completed the original agenda, and what we've added is a vote to move into a closed session to discuss a matter that's, that's protected as provided by Minnesota statutes. So what I'll do is I'll, I'll read the, the applicable language, and then I'll ask someone to move that we close the session pursuant to that, and then second it, and then Todd will need to take a vote, and if we pass that, then the meeting will be closed. I believe technically that Wayne, our IT director, will then come in and here at District Center, move us to a new Zoom link, and I believe we all got separate Zoom links to come back in, is that true? Into the closed session. So with that, I'd entertain a motion to close this meeting pursuant to Minnesota statute, section 13D.05 subdivision 3B of the open meeting law for attorney-client communication regarding possible litigation on an employee matter. Could someone move to do that?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Thank you, Todd. Hearing none, Todd, could you take the vote?
Clerk Anderson votes aye. Chair Bogushevsky?
Aye.
Treasurer Goggins?
Aye.
Director Johnson?
Aye.
Director Chu?
Aye.
And Director Shaw?
Aye.
Motion passes. We're going into closed session, and we'll see you all again when we've re-zoomed in in just a few. Although, I think, are there others who are joining in? Do they know? I think we had said originally we thought might not be till 9:00, but we're a little before that.
Could we, could we add a time break in there, too?
A time break?
Yeah.
Oh, like, want to take 10 minutes and come back?
Or something.
Oh, something, yeah, just to fill my water and just, yeah.
Okay. You want to say?
She suggested five minutes.
Five minutes?
Five is fine. Just any break.
Yeah, we'll do five minutes. We'll, we'll do five minutes.
I can say we're a little over the, or earlier than the estimated timeframe. I'm not sure if our guest is there or not.
Oh.
Soon. So, yeah.
All right. We'll reconvene in five minutes and then see where we are. So this, we've just voted, the session is closed, so, so long. See you on the other side. Okay, we're back up broadcasting. We've concluded our closed session, and our meeting is now adjourned. Thanks, everyone. See you in January. Have a great...